I am Sharon Burke. I'm a member of the League of Women Voters of Diablo Valley. Welcome to tonight's Candidates Forum for Lafayette City Council. We have with us tonight Carl Anduri, Gina Dawson, and Farshad Farzan. Mr. Cameron Burks was also invited, but let us know this afternoon he is too ill to attend, so we have accepted his regrets. The League is a nonpartisan political organization that encourages the informed and active participation of citizens in government. The League supports neither candidates nor parties, and the League's mission is to increase informed voter participation in our democracy. In accordance with League policy, I don't live or vote in Lafayette. I have no interest in this election, other than I hope I do a good job for you and for the candidates as your moderator tonight. These three candidates and Cameron Burks, who could not be here tonight, are running, so four candidates total, are running for three positions as your city council member for the city of Lafayette. Tonight, we have League members Marian Shostrom and Martha Garofka here, and they will be timekeepers and let the candidates know when their time is up. They will signal the candidates with colored signs, yellow for 15 seconds remaining and red when their time is up. Each candidate shall have a minute and a half for an opening statement. We have collected questions from voters that I will pose to the candidates, who will have 60 seconds to respond. The order of answering the questions will be alternated, and each candidate will be asked to respond to every question. The candidates have not received the questions in advance. Each candidate will then have a minute and a half for a closing statement. I drew names out of a hat just now for the speaking order. We will go in the order that was drawn for the opening statement, and in the reverse order for the closing statement. Now for our candidates. Our first candidate to speak is Carl Anduri.
Well, thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. Lafayette is a very special place to live. Our challenge during these uncertain times is not just to preserve what is good about our city, but to look to the future and strive to make Lafayette even better. I'm running for the Lafayette City Council because I want to do my part to make Lafayette an even better and more supportive place to live for all its residents. That was my motivation when I applied for the Lafayette Planning Commission in 1997 and served for six years. It was my motivation when I first ran for the city council in 2002 and served for 10 years. In 2012, I stepped away from the council when the demands of my job became too great, but I solved that problem last year by retiring. I'm now asking you for the opportunity to bring my years of experience back to the city council and help Lafayette rise to the challenges of our time, including the regional housing shortage, climate change and its impacts, the need to provide racial justice and equity, the economic impact of the pandemic, and the aging of our population. I'd like to see our city meet these challenges in a manner that not only improves the lives of our residents, but makes us a model for others to emulate, a model of a sustainable, inclusive, supportive community. I look forward to our discussion tonight.
Thank you, candidate Anduri. Next up, chosen by lot, Farshad Farzan.
Thank you again for having us, and it's a pleasure to be here. You have great candidates. I've said it through every forum that we've had. You're not going to make a bad choice, so that's the great thing for our citizens. I'm running for city council to provide a new voice to the city, to provide a newer voice to the city. I am currently on the Planning Commission and have been since 2018. I'm currently the vice chair, so I have a lot of background in our housing laws, our zoning, our general plan, et cetera, so I'll bring that knowledge with me. I don't need to get up to speed. I've also been a lawyer for 20 years. Carl's obviously has great legal experience, too. I will add that to the city council, which, in my humble opinion, the city council needs. I also have years of background in business, which I can provide, helping with our budgets, helping with allocations, reallocations, et cetera. I bring a lot to the table. What I'm known for mostly is somebody who is good at bringing people together and coming up with solutions, and that's what I plan on doing if I get on the city council. As Carl said, we live in a great community, and we're a great community with great people, and I want to bring everybody to the table to make it better. The key is to make it better, great, but to make it better, and that's why I'm running. And I'll cut it short there. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Farzan. Our third candidate to speak is Gina Dawson, 90 seconds.
Thank you, and thank you very much for the opportunity to be here and answer questions with my fellow candidates. So I've lived in Lafayette for the past 12 years, and since I've lived here, I've been working to protect and enhance the very same qualities of Lafayette that drew me here, the wonderful town environment, their great schools, the environment that we live in, the hillsides and the trees. I'm currently working with the Gas Safety Task Force. It's a group that I formed with fellow residents, and we've brought real gas safety improvements to town, did that by working with the stakeholders, PG&E, the city, and even the CPUC, to, you know, create collaboration and transparency so that we could really get to advocating for real priority of safety measures in our community that protects our people. I founded Save Lafayette Trees, a nonprofit with my husband. We've been protecting trees across the city from PG&E program that we didn't think was appropriate, and that led to the gas safety task work. I've also worked with Lafayette Partners in Education, was a founding member of that group, with fundraising, worked with Sustainable Lafayette, and currently on the board of Lafayette Hillside Memorial, and we're working to preserve the legacy of remembering the cost of war. So I come from the community. I come from a leadership position, really listening to voices and collaboration, and I want to bring that to, you know, to what's next for the city. Thank you.
Okay, now we'll move to the question part of our candidates' night. And the questions have been collected by the League in advance. They've come from Lafayette voters and from League members. Gina, the first question goes to you. A reminder, you have one minute, and the timers will give you a 15-second warning sign and an ending sign. The first question is about bike safety. Are you satisfied with city efforts to encourage more bike and pedestrian traffic and to promote bike safety? What would you do to improve bike use and safety in our city?
The first thing I would do is, well, first off, I'm not satisfied with the bike safety. I know there's been quite a few number of safety incidences in the past few years, and it's not acceptable, even fatalities. So what I would do is take advantage of the work that's coming out of the community right now. There's a group in Burton Valley that's working on bike safety, the Akalani's. Safe Rasta Akalani's is working. There's great work that has been done for the past few years that the city can leverage and is starting to. These organizations that are already looking for grants, working with Berkeley SafeTrack, really coming together and putting this in front of the city so we can have better leverage of that. That's one thing to do. And really looking at all the studies that we've done before and pulling out the best that we can do and looking at how we can prioritize based on, you know, obviously, financial restraints, but that's why I'm working with the community and leveraging off the work they're doing and listening to them is going to be a great way to move Lafayette forward with the bike safety issues.
Thank you. Farshad, same question, bike safety.
We can absolutely do more. I've said this before. I'm an avid bicyclist. I ride 45 to 50 miles every week, so I know the dangers of our Lafayette roads, unfortunately, myself. We need to do more. I think education's number one. I think just to remind people that we share roads. I know it's a silly item, but I think just reminding them is an important issue. I'm less concerned about adults as I am about children on the roads. We want to make sure they're safe. We want to make sure they're on their bicycles, getting around, so they're not in cars needing to be dropped off. I grew up on a bicycle. I think a lot of us did. We want to have that same opportunity. And again, I know we have budgetary issues right now, but once we get a little bit up to speed on that and keep our fingers crossed we're starting to get to that point, I think we need to focus in on our bike lanes to make them visible. Even the bike lanes that we have now are faded away and barely visible in a lot of places. I think visible, green, and potentially areas that we can make them wider. There are areas we can do that and there are areas we can't, but that's the focus.
Carl, same question, bike safety.
Yeah, I sat in, as did Gina, on a subcommittee of the council, I think, believe that was last week, that looked at some of these issues, and I have to say that I was disappointed in the statistics that I heard. They're not good. We obviously do need to do more. There has been a prepared bicycle master plan that it would be great to be able to put into effect. I know one of the big items in that plan revolves around education. As Farshad said, that's a very important part of what we can do. There's also a lot of physical things that we can do, and we'll be getting into this in this discussion in more detail, but budgetary constraints, unfortunately, because of the pandemic, are going to be a big problem for Lafayette as for other cities in the future. So today's action with the president breaking off the negotiations is not a good sign for Lafayette or any communities, but that's just something we're going to have to deal with. But I would, as I've said in previous fora, would double down on what we do for bicycles because I think that's something that's required as our response to the climate change. It's a thing that we need to do to make our downtown more vibrant. And I have to say, I can't see the timers on my screen, so...
Oh, I am sorry about that. Let's fix that. Is that a setting thing? Paul's our tech guy.
You can actually, so Carl, you can move. So I don't know what yours is set up, but you can change the settings to one, the speaker.
Ah, I'm good now.
Okay.
I won't be able to see you, Farshad, but I can see...
Me isn't important, trust me. It's not much to look at, so...
I think you guys have seen each other a lot. Now, I've lost my place. I asked all three of you about bike safety, right? Next question. Okay. Farshad, if you would start us off, please. This voter's worried about fire insurance, and fire insurers leaving Lafayette due to the wildfire arrest. Does the city have a role in that? Is there anything they can do? How can the city be proactive on fire safety, including taking the lead and encouraging vegetation manning?
So I'm a huge proponent of fire safety and evacuation plans. I've submitted that the city needs to add specific issues through the city council that sets certain parameters for traffic in highly dangerous neighborhoods where the egress and ingress is dangerous if we need an evacuation. I think it's urgent. We can't wait to do that. I think something that we need to hop on as soon as possible. Are we doing enough? In my humble opinion, the answer is no. We need to do more as a city to get ahead of wildfire issues. We have many neighborhoods in Lafayette that if a fire breaks out, there would be a lot of trouble evacuating, so we need to get ahead of that. With respect to the insurance issue, I've had mine canceled twice, and I had to go to a third insurance company to get it because I live near the reservoir that is really wooded, so mine got canceled. Can the city do anything about that? I personally don't think directly, but the state can, and we should push the state to push insurance companies to make sure people are covered.
Thank you. Carl, same question, fire insurance and wildfire safety.
Yeah, well, this is a huge issue. Obviously, this is one of the impacts of climate change that we need to deal with. The city's been doing a number of things. I would call your attention to some of the materials that have been put out. I think we need to do even more to publicize this, but Lafayette's Emergency Preparedness Commission has been doing a great job of putting out materials and trying to make people aware of what the issues are. But as with all the things that we'll be talking about tonight, there's always more we can do, and as the situation gets to be more difficult, there's even more that we need to think about. In terms of the insurance, yes, I know about people who have had their insurance canceled. Again, I'm not sure, as Farshad said, what the city can do. I think we need to work with the state to make sure that we can take care of our residents. It's something I'd like to look into.
Gina.
I think that I agree that it's not necessarily a city-driven effort, well, in terms of what we can do specifically about fire insurance, but we as residents can make sure that we are doing everything we can to be fire-safe and following the recommendations of the Contra Costa Fire, and of course, as Carl pointed out, the wildfire and evac preparation plan, to make sure we're aware of that. So we're doing everything we can do to protect ourselves and our homes so that we don't hopefully need to file claims if there should be fire. Definitely what the city can do is just do what we can to be fire-safe in our surrounding areas. Some of the work that I've been doing with PG&E is for fire safety and gas safety within that because there's evac routes from Bionys and Spring Hill neighborhoods that we need to do a better job on, getting a fast response time and getting people out in a quick time.
Thank you. Do you know, we're missing one candidate, and I would like to give you all some more time, and you've been very good so far. I would like to say, timekeepers, if it's okay, let's give everybody, show the yellow sign at a minute and the red sign at a minute and 15 seconds. Can you handle that, or should I just? I've been being lenient. Would that be better if I were just more lenient, or am I going to mess you up if I?
Whatever you need. Whatever you need.
Okay, let's give them a minute, and we'll do the yellow sign and then the red sign at 15 seconds. Carl, if you would start us off, this homeowner says she lives near Akalani's High School. Paul, are you going to put Mr. Anduri up, or is this not working?
Yes, after you finish your question.
Oh, sorry. I am so sorry. This homeowner says she lives near Akalani's High School, and she's in the area that was evacuated on short notice for the October 2019 fire that jumped Highway 24. She is extremely concerned that an emergency might happen at rush hour. That evacuation happened on Sunday afternoon. With the existing traffic and the new traffic from the terraces, she's afraid of a tragedy happened. What can be done about traffic in the Pleasant Hill Road area?
Right, well, I experienced that myself. I live just off Release Valley Road and go down Pleasant Hill Road, so I go through that intersection frequently. I was here on that Sunday when all of that happened. That's something that's going to be a priority for me if I'm elected to the council. In terms of what can be done, I think we need to, as we move forward with the terraces project, we need to look carefully at what's happening with planning for traffic. It's just something that we need to look at more. I don't have specifics at this time, but I can assure you that that's something that I'll be looking into very carefully.
Gina, traffic in the Akalani's area.
I think traffic across town is an issue, and obviously particularly there has been a longstanding issue. I think, like Carl, I don't have specifics, but what I can say is working on traffic congestion issues, reducing traffic by promoting more ways to travel without being in a car. So we reduce traffic in general. Working with the Contra Costa Transportation Authority on some of their goals is a good way that the city can participate in reducing traffic down the 24 corridor that impacts traffic through Lafayette. So that would be one thing we can look at, and just really looking at traffic flow. As traffic education is going to be a big part of it, too. There's also signaling that we can look at with timing on signals, so that's better. And if there was an evacuation, I think working with the city to make sure there is first responders that can actually help that traffic flow in a quick and efficient manner at the time, so people know where they're heading towards, and it's in a good controlled manner.
Farshad.
So let me just say clearly, the Akalani's area traffic isn't just a traffic problem. It's a dangerous problem, and I've said this before. It's not just dangerous for people who are driving on it. It's also dangerous, unfortunately, for people who bike it and walk it. We have two schools there, and then there is a preschool that's in the area. I find it to be utterly dangerous during the mornings and the evenings, so we need to do something about it. I actually have a specific proposal that I would put forward. I think we need to push the CCTA to contract with streetlight data to give us live traffic information. It's unfurnished. It's real. We know where the traffic is going, where the traffic is coming from. Once we have the real data, we can then use that to make decisions. Number two, we also need to understand that Lafayette, unfortunately, is a thoroughfare for other cities. Moraga, Orinda, people driving through Pleasant Hill Road to go to Concord, wherever it may be, Pleasant Hill. We need to understand that and work with our neighboring cities to come up with solutions. We can't just fix it on our own. We need real data. After we get that real data, we need to work with our partners to correct the data.
Thank you. Gina, could you start us off on this? What is the status of the effort to save our beloved Park Theater? Does the city have a role, or should all the efforts be private?
I think the city has a role in supporting the community group that has formed to protect it, and I think that's the important thing the city can do is facilitate conversations and really figure out a way that they can promote the way the community can get engaged more because it is one of those historic icons in town, and it can be one of those attractions for the community-wide, for all different ages, and has many different uses, and it could even be attraction for developers and the way we want our city to go in terms of planning, having a lively, vibrant downtown that promotes more business and more community building. So the city's role would really be to facilitate that organization's work, get the word out, and do what they can to support planning for them now and in the future. It most likely can be, once again, with financial constraints. So I think the more we can do to leverage the energy through the当地 community is going to be key, and that's been our greatest strength since inception, and I think it'll be the greatest strength going forward as long as we're harnessing that energy and working together for that better part of planning.
Thank you. Carl, the Park Theater.
Yes, the Park Theater can be a key part of revitalizing the downtown after the pandemic. It's something that should be one of the top priorities. There's a great group that's working on that. Just Gina said, the financial side of it is going to be very difficult. The city is not going to be able to play a big role in that, but the city is going to have to play a supportive role. The city needs to be sure that there are no ordinance issues that make it more difficult for the Park Theater to reopen in some form. So that's going to mean looking at parking and other issues that might otherwise be a problem. The city's going to have to clear the way on those things because having the Park Theater as a live part of our downtown is going to do a lot to help our retail environment and just our spirit of community.
Farshad, the Park Theater.
I will echo what Gina and Carl said. So I think the city should facilitate the development of the Park Theater. Budgetarily, we can't put money into it, but we can help move along the process, and we've got great people working on that. I also wholeheartedly agree that would help with revitalizing or energizing the downtown, getting more people to go. I think it would attract people not just from Lafayette, but from surrounding communities. So I think it would be great for business, too. It also would add to people wanting to walk around downtown, potentially bike downtown. So it's a great attraction, so I agree wholeheartedly there. And the final thing I'll say is what Carl ended up with in his comments. I think we should do everything we can to get roadblocks out of the way for the development, right? Whatever we can, we want to do what we can to get this thing done, and I think we're in a good position to do that.
Farshad, maybe you'll start us off on this next question. Should Lafayette work? Did I skip you?
No, no, we're good.
You're good. Should Lafayette work with BART to develop affordable housing or zone for affordable housing or work with BART to put affordable housing in the BART station parking lot?
Okay, so lots of some points in that. So the first point is AB 2923, if I've got the number correct off the top of my head, has passed. We have until July of 2022 to rezone the BART property per AB 2923 for development. So that's in the books. There's nothing we can do about that unless there's a law that's passed that takes that away. We also want to zone it, and we want to be ahead of it because we don't want to be stuck with what BART says we need to do with it. So that's number one. Number two, we need to be proactive, working with BART on what we want that development to be with respect to what it looks like, what's included, and obviously, affordable housing would be great to include there, and I think that's a goal. Now, if I take several steps backwards, I am not a fan of BART being a developer. Having written on BART for 15 years of my life, they could barely get me somewhere on time, which they should focus in on, and then moving to development is not something that provides me much comfort. But I do think we can be ahead of it and steer it in the way that we as a community want that development to be.
Gina, the BART parking lot and development.
I think that we really have no choice. That we will want to work with BART because of what Farshad said. The bill has passed. We want to comply with that. And I think it's really important to be proactive on it. We're going to necessarily need to change our zoning to allow BART to even build homes there. And like Farshad mentioned, we, of course, and the state also. The reason why that transportation-oriented development bill passed was because the state wanted to get infill in those places right next to transit for affordable housing. So we have a good opportunity to do great things together. So being proactive, working with the community so that they know what's going on and what our requirements are, and as we work out the plan and maybe standards as best we can for what we'd like to see down there and collaborate proactively with BART, we might come really close to something that just fits that space, fits the bill in terms of helping us hit our affordable housing numbers on a different range of those affordable housing options. And I think it could be a good thing for the city. It's going to come to Lafayette sooner or later, later at this point, but it's still something important to be proactive on. And collaboration, when you have buy-in upfront, makes things go smoother as you try to get to really what a win-win for everybody.
Thank you. Carl, BART parking lot.
Yes, number one, there's going to be a big communication issue here because, as Farshad said, the city has no choice but to rezone in accordance with the state law. And we need to make sure that Lafayette residents are aware of that, so that there's no misunderstanding and there's no misplaced anger about that so that we can together deal with the situation. And fortunately, we have a way to deal with it. And fortunately, we have a way to deal with it, and that is that we're now launching our update of the general plan. And the very first thing that we'll be doing as part of that is looking at the housing element. And so I think we need to get community involvement, community engagement around the question of what we want to do with respect to the BART parking lot and build that into the discussion of the housing element and where we want to see housing in Lafayette and what kind of housing we want to see. Recognizing that there's a huge issue here in that we are not an urban BART station, but we're a station that relies on people bringing their cars. Not that we wouldn't try to lessen that, but realistically, we would be, it would be a big problem if we were to lose the parking lot.
Thank you all. Okay, the next question is about Prop fifteen. Do you support Prop fifteen? And for the audience, I'll say that's the state proposition that we're all voting on in November. Generally called the split role, I believe. It would assess businesses more often than when they are resold. Their assessed valuation would be assessed on a regular schedule instead of just when they change hands. Gina, do you support Prop fifteen? This voter wants to know.
I do support Proposition fifteen. I think it's it's a good idea for commercial properties to to play a larger role in in funding. And we are going to have issues with the pandemic and the state balancing monies to get us through this. They deferred school funding payments for the next couple of years. And that's going to be a big hit. So whatever we can do to shore up funding for our schools is going to be critical. You know, it's coming from Lafayette Partners in Education. Each year as we we fund the schools, it's good to know that we have some constancy and some you know, minimums of what we're going to get in because it's such a fine line to get you know, the rest of the funding for that year because we fund for the current year. So I do support it. I think especially commercial properties. It's a, it's a good idea to to make sure that they're paying a good share of the funding that makes communities where commercial properties are. It's a value and they're they're contributing to that.
Carl, Prop fifteen.
One of the things I made sure of when I was on the council is I never voted on anything unless I thoroughly thoroughly researched it and understood every side of the issue. And I have to say that this weekend is the weekend I'd set aside for looking at all the propositions, but in the, I I am leaning yes. I've got the the state booklet and I've looked at the league's position on this issue and I'm leaning towards a yes, but I'm not a definite yes until I do my full research this weekend.
Farshad, Prop fifteen.
I was gonna say, I'm also doing my full review this weekend, too, but I'll give you some of my thoughts. I'm leaning towards it, too. One, relatedly, I'm adamantly in favor of Prop thirteen. It stays residential, doesn't get affected. We keep the law as it is. Prop fifteen is obviously commercial. I know there are exemptions for smaller business owners and commercial owners. I wish that was a little bit larger or more exemptions so people aren't hampered on the lower end of the economic scale, so to speak. But right now, if you had to ask me, considering where we are economically in the state, I'm leaning towards it, too. But not fully there yet. I have not done full research.
Thank you. So Carl, could you start us off? This voter said a few years ago, Lafayette's City Council passed an ethics ordinance applying to planning and design review commissioners, but not to the city council. Five planning commissioners resigned in protest to the ordinance. Do the council candidates support the ethics ordinance? To what extent would the council candidates be prepared to support a similar law impacting the council? So Carl, Farshad, and then Gina.
I was struck by the fact that when that was passed, it didn't apply to the council. I was not a supporter of that law because I think it went too far. There were people who resigned from the planning commission who had made valuable, valuable contributions to Lafayette. But that now is the ordinance. As Farshad pointed out, I'm a lawyer. I believe in stability in the law. My view would be that we see empirically how this ethics law works out, how it affects our design review and our planning commissions. I wouldn't support changing the law now, but I would look to see how it works in practice. And then just as we would with any ordinance, see if it's if it's effective.
Farshad.
I was a supporter of the ordinance and I think the ordinance should apply to the city council, period. I don't think there should have been an exclusion. You can't have it for design review and planning commission and then not have it for city council. That empirically and objectively, it doesn't make sense to me. By the way, I signed it when I joined the planning commission because it was the rule, the ordinance in place. I do agree with Carl. There were members of both of those commissions that provided invaluable service to this community for a long period of time. I don't think anybody would argue against that. Unfortunately, though, we had too many instances where at a minimum, there was an appearance of impropriety based on people sitting on those commissions and people who were appearing with projects. And that doesn't look good to the community. And we probably should have done something earlier, maybe not at that level. But to me, you should have a separation between the projects or things that come before you and and the people who are presenting it, period. There shouldn't be that conflict between you and the people who are doing it. There should be objectivity for all projects and I would fully be on board with doing that with the city council.
Gina, ethics ordinance.
Well, I agree. I think I think what we ask our commissions to do and and what any volunteer to do, we should be able to apply to council as well. I think in council, it works where things come before us. You know, you're you recuse yourself if there is any potential conflict of interest or if you think there will be. So to just put it forward and take that but go by the ordinance, I think it's a, it's a good idea. It's if we're going to ask other groups, other people who are working to do that, we should work by those same standards. And I think that's in all fairness, and even if we do have our own ability to and responsibility to recuse ourselves, I think just getting that off the table upfront so so that we know going into it, it's it's just something we we have to do. And I think that if there's an opportunity that if 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 there's not enough people to just like, for instance, planning commission, just go up to the next highest body and have anything that there is a conflict, go up to the next highest body and or or to make sure there's enough people to vote or review review matters before them so that there's a fail safe.
Gina, would you start us off the next question? Another homework question. Do you support Measure X? So I'll remind the voters, the Measure X is a countywide sales tax increase that would go for a I believe, the hospital and the county hospital and emergency response and fire services. There's a list of projects the county proposes to use that for. And Gina, if you could start us off, do you support Measure X?
Well, I'll put it this way. I will, because I need to do my homework on that. So I don't want to put something out there. I know taxes especially are are tough ones unless you you know exactly, at least I like to know exactly how it's proposed, what exemptions are, etc. So but I can tell you, the value would be to make sure that we are covering as a county, the basic needs we we need for our hospitals, for our medical care, healthcare and and first responders. But specifically to Measure X, I do need to do my my homework and read through that so I can give a more specific answer. I will be glad to do that and follow up to this forum.
Carl, Measure X.
Yes, I'm going to plead homework, too. That's on my list for for this this weekend to research. I'm going to go back to the last question if I could and say that the problem, I I agree, i- if it's going to apply to the planning commission, the designer, it should apply to the council, but that that shows the difficulty with this ordinance because you can't just recuse yourself. You have to resign. And that would mean there'd be a number of people who have served on the council in the past, including at least one of the people who supported that measure, who couldn't have served on the council if it implied to the council. I would have no trouble abiding by that particular ordinance now, but I'm retired. And again, you eliminate a number of good possible council candidates if you apply the ordinance in its current position. I, there is no other ordinance in California that goes as far as this ordinance. It's, 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 it's something I think we do need to look at in a couple of years and just see how it's been working out for our city, but it's not something that we should be changing immediately. We have too many other things to discuss.
Thank you. Farshad, do you support Measure X?
I have not fully looked into it. I want to be very clear here. I will say this. I think right now is not the best time to increase sales tax, considering the pandemic that we're in. We want to make sure people go and do as much shopping, so to speak, as possible. And I know unfortunately, because as Carl mentioned earlier today, our president ended up pulling out of discussions for a new COVID bill, which would have supported local governments, state governments, etc. So we're kind of stuck, you know, between Skyla and Caribbis, so to speak, because one, we don't want to increase sales taxes to keep people from shopping, but if we don't do something, unfortunately, our essential services are in trouble. So, long story short, I'm going to look into it closer. Again, I don't know who holds those funds. Are they specifically allocated for essential services? What the, what the amount is, etc. But I just think right now is a very bad time to increase sales tax, generally speaking.
Gina, would you start us off on this next question? How should Lafayette meet its R H N A obligations? I believe that's pronounced Rena to provide zoning to build four hundred and sixty eight very low income housing units and two hundred and sixty nine low income housing units? I assume the questioner knows the numbers. So Gina.
Well, I think this has come up and I think we have a responsibility to meet these numbers. These were allocated to us. And and it has come out before and I think few of us, if not all of us, are in agreement that the numbers are are derived in a way that we're like, hmm, a little questionable. But that being said, we do need to do our responsibility to have been in providing affordable housing opportunities. What we do need to do is help focus development of the lower income housing opportunities within that range of affordable housing. And I think there's a quite a few ways to do that, to have incentives for developers, either sweeten density bonuses, come up with you know, maybe streamlining the application process, appropriate process, and maybe even design standards if we can come to that with when we're looking at our general plan and looking at standards we might want to adopt. So that anything that helps create opportunities that will make it an attractive development, attractive investment for developers that will help us meet our numbers. But importantly, yes, we do need to zone and we do want to focus on downtown building in the core to take advantage of sustainable methodologies of transportation and community building and also has the advantage of revitalizing downtown with more customers downtown, the business core. And and there's just a lot of good opportunities that come in as we share the bounty of Lafayette with a range of opportunities for diverse people with different incomes.
Thank you. I gave Gina a little more time, Farshad and Carl, so I will too, because this is an important question and I've seen it come up a lot in the forums you've done before this. And so the question is Lafayette meeting its Rena allocations for Farshad.
So Carl and I have both said this. I'm not going to put words into his mouth and you'll follow me. I think the important thing to realize is the city doesn't build homes. Those Rena numbers are put in place and the city has designated areas where those units can be built. So we've done what we can as a city to be able to fill those numbers. It's up to developers to build them. So that's a very important issue everybody should keep in mind. Having said that, we do need more affordable housing. There's no ifs, ands, or buts about that. But again, the areas have been designated to do that. We need developers to come in and build those units. I agree with Gina. I've said this before. We should focus developments in the downtown corridor because it's the best place. People are near commuting with BART, they're near businesses there and they stay out of their cars so people can get around. You have clientele there. Everything can be done and that's what we want as as a community. We get affordable housing there. We have new customers there. We get people out of their cars for sustainability. Everything we can do there. And that's where I would leave it.
Carl. Rena allocations.
I assume those numbers that you gave are the new numbers because the total allocation of the old numbers going through twenty twenty three was four hundred. So I assume those are the new ones.
I think it's just the very low income and low income numbers. I don't think it's moderate.
Right, that those would be must be the ones that are proposed for the next cycle because ones are much lower for the current.
So maybe you should just address the the whole issue instead of the specific numbers.
Absolutely. I just want to point out that that's, it's always a question about our Rena numbers and whether they're fair or not. But the point that I've been making throughout these discussions is that we need to see ourselves as part of the larger community. That Lafayette has an obligation to provide housing to help meet the state shortage, the regional shortage. And we can do that in our downtown area. We need to be careful about the structure to support that, but that's something that we we can do. It's difficult to provide the very low income and the low income is Gina mentioned, but it's something that we need to be focused on. We need to plan for it because it's it's just something we need to do.
Thank you. Farshad, the next question is also about fire. Would you support a city study on whether Lafayette should merge with Moraga-Arenda Fire Department or remain with Confire? Farshad, would you start us off?
I'm always open to evaluating a potential better solution. I I can't say I've looked specifically into this issue, but I'm always open to getting the best data and coming to the best solution. So that's my very quick answer to that.
Carl, are people happy with Confire?
Well, I I'm going to go with Farshad's answer on this. I'm always open to looking at things, too, when it comes to our police protection. For example, we're always looking at ways that we can get the best service at the appropriate cost. I think the same is true of the fire service. So I would be open.
Gina.
Well, I would say Confire has done a fantastic job for us. I mean, with fires, just a year or so ago, they were so quick and pulled out all the stops to catch that and 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 really cut it off quickly. So that was reflection of resources that they have available to them. And that's critical, especially because parts of Lafayette are in tier two and tier three fire areas. We need all the resources we can get. That being said, I agree with Carl and Farshad. I mean, it's always good to look at options, to look at, see if there's synergies that are cost effective. But most importantly, the bottom line is that response time, are we going to preserve it? Because it's pretty great. And also, you know, I guess it's pooling in those other guys, too, because Arinda and and Moraga especially has evacuation. because Arinda and, and, um, Maraga especially has evacuation routes through Lafayette. So, uh, maybe it's a factor of really looking and seeing how we can improve safety, fire safety and all, uh, La Merinda. So it bears looking into.
Carl, could you start us off? What is the most effective thing the city can do to help Lafayette businesses recover from COVID-19?
Well, a lot of it is, is out of the city's hands. Unfortunately, again, coming back to the president's action today, the support that was being provided by the federal government was very helpful to Lafayette businesses. What the council did, uh, to engage Townsend as part of the, the business assistance program was one of the best things the council had did, had done. That is asking Townsend to work with the businesses to access the resources that are available through the federal government and the state. Uh, that's been suspended, uh, since those resources are, are no longer available. The council has committed, I believe, to, uh, starting that again when the, the resources come back. But that, that's just a key thing because that's resources that we as a city, uh, can't, uh, provide, uh, on the same level the federal government can. So that's, that's essential. What we can do as a city is to constantly encourage our residents to shop local, to, uh, patronize the restaurants on a takeout basis, to patronize the restaurants and the outdoor eating, to, to patronize our, our retail outlets and shop Lafayette. But, uh, uh, those are the main things we can do now.
Gina, what can the city do to help Lafayette businesses?
I think, um, what, what is always a good answer is basically talk to those businesses and, and get their ideas of what we can do. Definitely working with the Chamber of Commerce because they've been, they also are pulling out all stops to support businesses while the pandemic is happening. So if there are ways that city can facilitate some of the, um, ways to create and keep business downtown. For instance, the, you know, relaxing a little bit of the, the, the issues about restaurants expanding out into the streets or parking and whatnot. I think that's an important way that we can do that without spending the money. That being said, I think it will be important for us to have round tables with our business owners and, um, people who, who are leasing property to, to the business owners because the small business loans that Townsend actually helped, um, some, or at least kept track of, they're going to be coming due. And with, as, as Carl relayed, the, what happened today, it's going to be in an impact, um, in terms of, you know, where we thought there would be a little bit of a lifeline, there's, there's not right now. So we're going to have to figure out how to support the businesses as they, bills are going to be coming due, the loans are becoming due. So it'll be important to figure out, um, helping how to encourage the, the community to come out and really support them maybe more than just coming out to take out, like what else can we do programmatically? Um, that's, that's levering it off of efforts by the chamber, something creative, something innovative to bring people down.
Thank you. Thank you. Farshad, helping the businesses downtown.
Agree with Carl's points, agree with Gina's points. I think the simple issue is shop local, number one. And number two, attract people to come shop in Lafayette. I think too many people end up just coming to Lafayette, for instance, to go to Safeway or Trader Joe's, for instance, from Maraga or Arinda, depending on where they live. We have so much more to offer. There are restaurants. We have really cool boutiques downtown. We need to make sure that people know that they're there, encourage them to shop there. I think generally this community has done a great job of shopping locally with our restaurants and retail. It's been a great community outreach. What Gina just pointed out, I thought is great that the city council ended up extending the seating for restaurants on Mount Diablo. It was a really great idea during this time period. Uh, it expanded, um, customers and people seem to love it right now. But obviously it's something that can't continue in bad weather. And quite frankly, there's a parking issue once we hopefully get past this pandemic. So those are the things I would encourage. Uh, the one thing down the road, once we're more fiscally in a better place, potentially tax abatement, we can talk about other issues. But right now, unfortunately, the city can't afford that because of a budgetary issues.
The next question, Farshad, if you would start us off, is about policing. Would you support relieving the pressure from our on-duty police officers by repurposing police funds for trained mental and social service response to mental crises and domestic disputes? And I believe you're a contract city, so I suppose you'd have to work with the sheriff on that. Farshad and then Gina and then Carl, repurposing police funds.
Um, I am absolutely in favor of considering some allocation of funds for those services. It's important. We've seen some issues even in our surrounding communities where a health checkup ended up not going well, to say the least. So I'm in favor of that. Um, I will say this, I'm a big fan of our police department. I actually went to the Lafayette Citizens Academy to learn more about how we do it and everybody involved. It was a great learning experience. Again, unfortunately, the budget is small. And as I understand it, during the, during this budget, um, cycle, the cost of actually gone up with the sheriff's department. So we've got to deal with that on an initial basis and then decide what portion of that we'd be willing to reallocate for those services. And again, I will say this, if you talk to enough law enforcement, officials and officers, et cetera, they are all in favor of having those services because they don't feel comfortable making those calls. It puts them in a very tough situation. So if we can get trained professional, mental health care professionals who can show up and on a timely basis, I think we can avoid a slew of problems.
Gina, repurposing police funds.
Yeah, I do think that it makes sense to have a trained professionals in, in that field to best respond in that situation. Um, not to take away from the great work of Chief Aldrich and his, his team. But that being said, our cost for, um, public safety is, is pretty high. And with what Farshad's saying and in terms of referring to costs are going up, I think it'll be important to look at the budget items and see where there's room to, you know, shift funds and, um, you know, take advantage of that because we're going to have to work within, you know, the, a tight budget as it is. But I definitely do believe it's the right thing to do. Um, you know, to have the, a, uh, specific, um, solution to specific issues like that, that would be great. Instead of creating some uncertainties, you might have more certainties with trained professionals coming out to handle situations and deescalate and, and handle it safely.
Carl.
This is a very difficult issue. We don't have funds to repurpose. Lafayette has what I would refer to as minimal patrol services. Uh, we don't have funds to shift. I wish we did, but we don't. We have to maintain what we have now. At the same time, I agree completely that if we could have people with better training who are actually trained for these situations, that would be great. The problem is that in many of these situations, you do need somebody with the, who is a law enforcement officer. You can't have somebody who's just a mental health officer taking care of it. I'd be in favor of looking into perhaps discussing with the police department that when people come to Lafayette, they go through special training. I realize you can never be a fully trained mental health professional, but perhaps that could be part of when somebody comes to Lafayette, they receive extra training and that's something that people would then want to come to Lafayette in order to get that training. So you'd have the people who are on patrol would have the training to be able to take care of that. Because while it would be ideal to be able to bring in a mental health professional, it's, it's, it's in reality very difficult to make that happen.
Carl, maybe you'd start us off on the next question. I believe you're redoing your general plan right now. What is your plan to maximize citizen input into the process?
Yep. Must have seen the last forum, whoever. I, I think that the key, um, one of the questions last time was what do you want the outcome to be? And for me, the outcome would be a general plan that is overwhelmingly, uh, approved by the citizens of Lafayette and they're aware of the plan. Uh, because we've had engagement of citizens throughout the process. And the city is, I think, off on the right foot in terms of making people aware that we're going through this process. Uh, but what we're going to need to do is make sure that there is awareness of every step, uh, that we're going through, particularly since the first part of this is going to be dealing with the housing element, which I think it's fair to say is going to be the most controversial part of what we do because it involves, uh, so much in terms of what happens in our downtown, what happens in our, in our neighborhoods. So it's, it's, um, we need to, as part of the process, look into what we do to, uh, create that engagement. So I can't go through a number of steps right now and just say that that's something that it's, it's essential that we do it.
Farshad. Citizen input to the general plan.
I think number one, we need to make sure our community members understand the importance of the general plan. I think unless you're in the land use world or have been involved in it, people don't understand the unbelievable importance of the general plan, which basically sets our future for the next 20 years. So that's number one, make sure people understand that. Um, I wholeheartedly agree with Carl and I'll say Gina said this in other forums. We want to get as many people to the table as possible. Different views, uh, different people keep showing up, not just GPAC, but beyond that, as many people as possible. That's what we want our community to look like in the future. And again, what would I want to steer it? The answer is it's not up to me and frankly, it's not up to us. It's up to the community what they want and we will steer that as best we can to get to the best result.
Gina.
I think, um, it's said before and, um, I think the important thing to do is definitely educate. To understand what that general plan is and, and really the general plan we have now is, is very rich. There's so much information out there. Um, but obviously to evolve, um, with the times and the, the challenging issues we have now, we need to look at revisions or need to look at what, what is going to happen, how to update it to accommodate the changes and challenges we're facing. So I think not only getting all the voices we can, but actually going out to find those, talk to those people where they're at. There's, um, the homeowners councils we can talk to. League of Women Voters group, we're right here. We can see if, can we come out, can we make that presentation? To get that input, we need to kind of get as many voices, I call it democratizing it as, as much as we can to get those voices so that it, um, the general plan, what the future looks like, the plan reflects the people that live here, the broad diversity of the people who live here right now. As well as welcomes hopefully a diverse group of people as we go forward and build for that Lafayette of the future.
Thank you. Well, I'm going to send everyone home early because I've come to the end of the questions. You've all been very good with time and we are missing one candidate. So we're going to finish a little bit early. And, uh, with our format, we'll now go to closing statements, which will be a minute and a half from each candidate. And the order, the speaking order is the reverse of the opening. So we're going to start off with Gina Dawson.
Well, I am very glad to be here. I am very, um, hopeful that I will have that opportunity to serve on city council and hope you vote for me. Um, I'm really, I'm looking forward to using my lab of teamwork skills, to put it to work for, for Lafayette, to, as I just finished up the last answer, to listen to you and to see how we can, you know, incorporate your, your words, your thoughts into action. Um, I'm very excited to be running. This is the 100th year of women winning the vote. So I'm very proud to be running this year. And I'm also very excited if, if I do want to see that city council some opportunity for the first time in history to have a, a, um, women majority. That's exciting in this particular year. Either way, it's exciting and I'm glad to be running with this great, uh, group of people. I, I think they're, um, wonderful folks. That being said, I, I hope to, um, those, uh, two of them on city council. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Farshad Farzan.
I, again, thank you very much for your time. Uh, I'll echo what I said at the beginning and what Gina said. You have great candidates here. Frankly, you can't go wrong. We have some differentiation between us, but it's not something where it's polar opposites on any issues. I will say, I, I will bring experience recently from the planning commission, if I make it on. So I'm very familiar with our housing laws and I've been dealing with it on a, you know, every two week basis since 2018. So I don't need to get up to speed on that. I've also been a lawyer for 20 years. Um, so I will also bring hopefully another layer of legal analysis to the extent that is necessary. And frankly, I do think it's necessary for a city council. I also will bring some business acumen. Um, having been in the private sector as a lawyer for the last, uh, several years, I, I deal with budgets, I deal with knowing where to allocate things and unfortunately sometimes squeeze the last dollar you can to make things go forward. And I think I will bring that. And the final two things I will say is I'm very collaborative in nature. I'm very open-minded. I'm here, we're here. I, I will say this for everyone, we're here to serve the community. This isn't, we're some, I'm not here to be on city council, then jump somewhere else. This is truly to keep giving back to the community. Um, I'm very collaborative. I will hear all voices and at the end of the day, we will reach solutions. I'm not in favor of eternal assessments. I'm a problem solver and that's what I'll do if I get on city council. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Carl Andere.
Well, thank you again to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum and for all that you do for the community. I look forward to looking at your materials, uh, this weekend as I make my final decisions on the, on the propositions. And I would encourage everyone who is still with us, I thank you for sticking with us. I encourage you to look at, at votersedge.org, the, the league's, uh, website to get more information on us, the candidates and on the other candidates and issues that are on the ballot. And if you're a real glutton for punishment, I direct you to my campaign website, andurie2020.com to get more information on, on, uh, on the issues uh, and on, on, um, my experience. I, I will agree with Farshad that it would be helpful to have a lawyer on the council. I think there are a number of issues that while, of course, we're not acting as lawyers for the city when we're on the council, there are things that would benefit from a lawyer's, uh, analysis. Uh, I have 45 years' experience, uh, of legal practice and do look forward to bringing that back to the council. So, uh, thank you for being with us tonight, giving us this opportunity and I encourage everyone to vote on or before November 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you. We've heard tonight from three candidates for Lafayette City Council. There was a fourth candidate, Cameron Burks, who could not be here tonight. You will be voting for three of the four candidates. On behalf of the League of Women Voters, I want to thank the candidates for being here tonight. If we were doing this in person, I'd have everybody give you a hand. So I'll just do it. Thank you for answering our questions. Thank you for showing up and taking the voters' questions. As, uh, Mr. Andere said, please visit the league's website, There's much information on all the candidates on your ballot as well as on all the local and state ballot measures. Because of COVID-19 pandemic, public health authorities are urging voters to vote by mail this election, or you can also drop off at Secure Ballot, drop off locations around the county. If you are registered to vote, you do not need to request a ballot. The county has already mailed out a ballot to every registered voter. If you are not yet registered to vote, the registration deadline is October 19th. You may also register and vote in person on early voting days, October 30th, October 31st and November 2nd. Instructions are in your ballot packet. Election Day is November 3rd. Be sure to register and vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.